Planning and zoning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Hugan with Planning and Zoning. First item we have today is LU-0010-25, which is Ed Rintimaki on behalf of Dawn and Jason Hanson. They're requesting for two newly created lots to remain in the agricultural zoning district that do not meet the minimum required acreage. This is located in the southeast of the northeast and MS-15-0052, all in Section 29 Township 155 North, Range 102 West, which is Mont Township. Mont Township did say that they were undecided with their recommendation, however, did cite that Mont Township does not oppose this request as it is an improvement over the previous request to make four lots and rezone to residential. However, we are disappointed with the removal of 40-acre lots from agricultural production moving toward development and therefore do not recommend approval. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision which would create two lots. Parent parcels are approximately 49.98 acres total and within the agricultural and rural residential zoning district. The newly created lots would be approximately 31.07 acres and 18.91 acres. The applicant is requesting a variance for these lots to be in the agricultural zoning district. The applicant had originally submitted this as a four-lot minor subdivision with a zone change to the rural residential zoning district. When our office solicited township comment, Mount Township gave a recommendation of denial. After receiving the recommendation, I had let Ed and Jason both know what was said. That time Jason reached out to the members of the township board and after those discussions decided to make it a two-lot minor subdivision and the variance as it is presented today. It was Jason's impression that doing this would ease the concerns of the township. The Hansons are building a home currently on the proposed 18.91-acre parcel. Access to the smaller lot will be taken off of 56th Street Northwest while access to the larger lot is off of 145th Avenue Northwest, which is also known as County Road 1. The minor subdivision is currently going through the review process with the necessary county departments and the lots will be known as MS-25-0011 and 0012. Recordation of the plat will be contingent on the approval of the variance. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this item on May 15th, 2025 and recommended approval 5 to 3.
Is the applicant present? I don't believe so. Okay, any questions? Any comments?
Just a quick question. The opposition is just because of ag land being turned, being developed into something other than ag land?
That's the way I read it, but if you-
That's the way I understand it as well. However, if you look up on the screen where the green dot is in the portion that has been farmed in the past, that is where the new home is going, is right in that area. And it's the purpose there, I'm unsure which one, which house is going to go to who, but the Hanson's will stay in the one house and then his adult child will have the other house.
And there was no opposition to that?
Well, I guess if you go down to the comments, if you read them, it's undecided, not opposed, and recommend not approval. So we covered the gamut. I'm not sure how many people wrote it, so.
It's a very confusing set of comments. I'd make a motion to approve following Planning and Zoning's recommendations.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the next one we have is LU-0015-25, which is Tom Lashowski on behalf of Colleen Wyrock. They're requesting a zone change to rural residential for a newly created lot. Parent property is currently within the agricultural zoning district. This is located in the east half of the northwest, Government Lot 1, which is the northwest-northwest, and Government Lot 2 being the southwest-northwest, all in Section 18 Township 156 North, Range 97 West, which is Equality Township. We have not yet received any comment back from Equality Township. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision which would create two lots. Parent parcel is approximately 131 acres and within that agricultural zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately 112.21 acres and 18.36 acres. The larger lot will remain in the agricultural zoning district while the applicant is requesting a zone change to rural residential for the proposed 18.36-acre lot. The purpose of the minor subdivision is to separate the home and outbuildings from the tillable land located on the parcel. Access to the lot with the home and outbuildings is taken off of US Highway 2 while the larger lot takes access off 117th Avenue Northwest. The minor subdivision is currently going through the review process with the lots to be known as MS-25-0015 and MS-25-0016. Recordation of the plat will be contingent on the approval of the zone change. When Planning and Zoning heard this item on May 15th, they did recommend approval 8 to 0.
Okay, is the applicant present? Questions? Comments? If none, what are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve LU-0015-25 with recommendations of Planning and Zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
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 Motion carried.
Okay, and the next one we have is LU-0017-25, Ed Rintimaki on behalf of TJC Smith Farms LL LP and Jennifer Smith. They're requesting a zone change to rural residential zoning district for a proposed 7.97-acre parcel. This is located in the west half of the northeast, southeast-northeast, northeast-northeast, and attract in the northeast-northeast, all in Section 29 Township 156 North, Range 100 West, being East Fork Township, and they did recommend approval on this project. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision which will create two lots. Parent parcels are approximately 160.17 acres total and are within the agricultural zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately 125, or excuse me, 152.20 and 7.97 acres. The larger lot will remain in the agricultural zoning district while the applicant is requesting the zone change to the rural residential zoning district for the smaller 7.97-acre lot. Purpose of this minor subdivision is to separate the home from the tillable land. Access to the home is off of 133rd Avenue Northwest, which is also known as County Road 9. The larger proposed lot takes access off 62nd Street Northwest. This is currently going through the review process with the lots to be known as MS-25-0017 and 0018. Recordation of the plat will be contingent on the approval of the zone change. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item May 15th and did recommend approval 8 to 0.
Okay, not here. Any questions, Michelle? What are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve following staff comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Bo?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carried.
Okay, so the next item we have is LU-0019-25. Ed Rintimaki on behalf of Steve Mortensen is requesting a zone change to rural residential for four proposed 10-acre lots. This is located in MS-23-0015 in the southwest of Section 25 Township 154 North, Range 103 West, which is Round Prairie Township. Round Prairie Township is undecided on their recommendation. However, their concerns are easements into the third and fourth 10-acre lots, access for safety reasons in and out of those 10-acre lots, and are the lots going to be hurting the current sale of lots in Rolling Hills subdivision, which is located just to the north of the proposed project. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision which will create five lots. Parent parcels approximately 120 acres and within the agricultural zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately 80 acres and then four lots of 10 acres each. The 80 acres will remain in the agricultural zoning district while the applicant is requesting a zone change to the rural residential zoning district for the four 10-acre parcels. Purpose of this minor subdivision is to create larger rural lots for future residential development. Access to the lots is through a private access road off of 148th Avenue Northwest. Minor subdivision is currently going through the review process and recordation of the plat will be contingent on the approval of the zone change. The lots will be known as MS-25-0019, 0020, 0021, 0022, and 0023. On May 15th, when Planning and Zoning heard this item, they did recommend approval 8 to 0.
Okay, any questions?
I'm just curious, on the east end of that, it shows a cul-de-sac. Is that, I was under, under the impression there were no cul-de-sacs and rural developments.
We call it a turnaround because for access for emergency vehicles, they have to have a large enough way to turn around, so they make it as a turnaround.
All right, thank you.
Pretty much.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve LU-0019-25 as with the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the final item I have this morning is LU-0024-25, which is Ashley and Andrew Borood, who are requesting a variance for a proposed approximately 1.08-acre lot to remain in the rural residential zoning district that does not meet the minimum required acreage. This is located in the northeast, southeast, southeast of Section 1, Township 155 North, Range 103 West, which is Hebron Township, and they have recommended approval on this project. The applicant is requesting the minor subdivision which will create two lots. Parent parcel is approximately 10 acres and within the rural residential zoning district. The newly created lots will be approximately 8.97 acres and 1.08 acres. The larger lot meets the minimum required acreage for the rural residential zoning district while the applicant is requesting the variance for the approximately 1.08-acre lot to also remain in that rural residential zoning district. The applicants were approved for a conditional use permit on this property in October of 2023 for a second dwelling. Since that time, they have moved a modular home onto the property and have applied for a state burn permit to burn down the existing farmstead home. However, with the current burn ban that was in place, the applicants did move forward and have now demolished the old farmhouse instead. Purpose of the minor subdivision is to separate the modular home from the rest of the property so the owners can obtain financing to build a home on the larger lot. The existing farmhouse is now gone, and I believe I inserted a picture showing that it is gone. This is currently going through the review process and the lots will be known as MS-25-0024 and 0025. Access to the subject properties is through an existing access road off of 59th Street Northwest and recordation of the plat will be contingent on the approval of the variance. On this, when the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this item on May 15th, they did recommend approval 8 to 0.
Okay, any questions? What are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve following staff comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Cameron, I believe you have something too.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cameron Heimer, Development Services. Doug Lawlum, our previous building official, he retired back in April. You may or may not be aware of that. Doug asked to retire quietly and just left on a Friday afternoon, and that's how he preferred it. But anyways, this morning I wanted to introduce you to our new building official, Sean Kavanaugh. Sean was previously with the city of Williston, conducting plans examination, but he has experience in architecture as well as real estate and owning and operating his own businesses. So we look forward to working with him and having him on our team, but I just wanted to introduce him so you have a face and a name to associate with that position.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, community engagement.
Good morning. We received our first complete application for the housing incentive program. It was for the buyer assistance, heard of it. The application was for up to $15,000 towards closing costs and interest buydown fees on a new construction home. And in the case of this application, it was located within the city of Williston. As a reminder, the financial assistance program is available anywhere in the county. The property tax exemption, that's only available outside of any city. That's just how the law is written. So the application went through the Housing Incentive Review Committee last week to review for completeness, and then it met the criteria of the program. They did recommend it for approval contingent upon special assessments and property taxes being paid in full prior to closing, which is usually par for the course. So just seeking approval of that application, unless there's any questions, for up to $15,000 contingent upon the payment of specials and taxes. And authorize the chairman to sign the agreement, which I'm still working on with Karen.
I just have a comment. I love how you stated it's the first complete application you've received. But there's been many that maybe have been incomplete.
There's a lot of interest in the program and we've been working and in hand to get through the application process.
On that note, I would move to approve the application for $15,000 contingent upon special assessment and property taxes being paid in full prior to the closing and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
And I'll second that and extend gratitude to Lindsay and others who've worked indefatigably to make this happen. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, looks like we want to talk about frost law funding.
Sure you do. Now we're in construction season. Frost is over. Up to you guys what you wish to do with, Christie has printed out $470,000 in frost laws this year. Frost law money.
One of the things, just for some background, we've done in the past is there's 52 townships and we split it up. I don't know if you've been through that. Barry, what are your thoughts?
So there's 697 in the, in that account, I believe, right, Christie?
Yep.
So I was, you know, just my thought was if we just divvied up and give each of them 10,000 and then keep the rest for in case something bad happens or what, I mean, what, is that, what do you think about it, Dennis?
Yeah, you've divided it up in the past. Yours has worked out well. Everybody got a piece of the pie and-
It makes perfect sense to me. I mean, if we were to do that and 10,000, it's not like we're rebuilding a whole township. It's a little bit of help and it's something we can give them, so. Are you making that a motion, Barry?
And your math is pretty good, Barry, so there's so many's left over, so.
Yes, I would make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then I'd like authorization to advertise for a mechanics pickup and possible skid steer. I wrote it somewhere. Mechanics pickup, yes, with the box hoist and air compressor.
Yeah, I would approve that or make that a motion, I guess.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
And then Helen will talk about the load pass designee form form that I should have brought in January. But she's got it with her, so.
Okay, um, I guess we-
Our, our construction projects, I always think-
11A42 is going good. Of course, the rain set them back a bit, but they're, they're doing good. 11 is getting started and with any luck at all, the end of the month, the box, the first one, the north one or on County 11, corner of 12 and 11 will be built the end of the month and ready for delivery. And Red Mike Golf Course 17A has a lift of mix on everything and two lifts on the two miles north and south, and they're starting the second lift east and west this morning. So it's, uh, that's going good.
So you're bored?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate the update on the projects. Hopefully they can continue moving along at this speed. All right, Helen.
Good morning.
Morning.
See a position report in front of you. We've had a few resignations, people moving away, going to do other new and exciting things. So there is a CAD technician. We had a CAD technician at County Highway for a number of years, actually. Somebody with those skills that had transferred in from a, from a different department at Williams County. But in talking with Dennis and, and doing, having HR do some research, we're going to advertise this position as two different things and see which one we can get filled first. You're going to see a request for us coming through in '26 to consider adding to our engineering team, and that would be what's called an engineer in training. So somebody who's through that four-year degree but probably hasn't been, doesn't have the time and the experience to be a PE. It may make sense for us to just fill that role now and talk in the future about the CAD technician because I think partially this CAD role, which means as the engineer comes up with the plans for road reconstruction, this is the person who uses the technology to make all the drawings. A lot of times now, young engineers are trained to do that drawing themselves and there isn't this pass off of work. So there aren't that many people coming out of school with these skills. We'd be looking for somebody who's experienced, who's done it before. We may not be able to find someone. So if we could instead fill the engineer in training role, then we would hold off on the CAD technician, have those discussions for future staffing. If we, if we get a CAD technician and it works, we of course would not fill the engineer in training because we'd still be having a discussion about how future staffing levels work. So a position in the engineering function, we'll advertise to, fill one as quickly as we can and then we'll keep talking about how we'll continue to move forward the department. Of course, the, the thing we know is we didn't used to do this volume of roadwork. And because of the activity in our communities with heavy loads and just the growth of the oil industry, we, we have a lot of roadwork to do. We have not increased our staff over the years and I think we're seeing that. We're going to probably need to do that.
With doing it that way, what if we get good applicants for both? Are we prepared to hire both at the same time?
I, procedurally, I would need to come back to you all because we haven't budgeted for that. So I would need to come back and, and request permission because of the financial impact, but yes, we would be prepared to do that.
Okay. Okay, any questions, guys?
Oh, I, how about I'll finish the other two. And then in the sheriff's office, we have an accounting payroll clerk and a patrol deputy.
What are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve these advertisements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And just an FYI, we are proceeding to advertise for the vector director position. We did not have the load pass delegates on, on any of the lists that, that we track. And so Dennis brought me this form, but here's the update that I can give you. Load pass is this organization, there's an advisory committee and they work with, you know, the load pass program that is the collect fees for overweight and permitting of, of travel. It's a multi-county organization. Each county has a, there's a city or county commissioner delegate, and then there's the sheriff. And, and as Dennis and I started to talk about it last week, then I talked to the sheriff about it a little bit as well. It would be our request to have Jamie Hushka, who in, at the sheriff's office oversees the weight enforcement officers, deputies, to have Jamie Hushka be the sheriff's delegate. And Dennis has been serving in this role along with the county commissioner. It's our suggestion that Dennis could continue to serve in that county commissioner role then, and so our two would be Dennis and Jamie Hushka. Now, if one of you really wants to go to these meetings, which are quarterly? I mean, twice a year, there's some meetings up for grabs if any of you would like to attend.
I think what they've come up with sounds like a great idea. Actually, I think Jamie will be a good addition and it'll probably help Dennis to, to have a little more support with it. So I, I mean, I think it's a great decision to put those two guys on it. They're the ones dealing with the roads, so. Makes sense to me, but what are the wishes?
I would make a motion to approve Dennis and Jamie for the load pass designees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then I will add these to our, just the list of positions that we keep track of so that we're not, you know, just have them on the list for what people are doing. Last meeting, I presented to you an application for the township loan program. And what I failed to realize is that there's one more- And what I failed to realize is that there's one more document. Once you guys do the approval and we get through some hoops. And so what I'd like is for permission for the chairman to sign any subsequent documents related to the township loan. For Williston Township that you all approved last time.
I'd move to approve that the chairman sign these subsequent documents.
For a second. Second. Moved in second and any discussion? Any discussion?
Just a notice that I, this is a pavement project that I live on, so I will be abstaining.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Steve?
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next time I'll know better. I'll bring, I'll, I'll get permission for all of them in, in one swoop. Uh, similarly, uh, just a little background to make sure we're all on the same page. Some number of years ago, well, when we go to re-license or retitle our vehicles, not our driver's license, but the titles on our vehicles. We're, we're really lucky here in our community to have an office where we can do, go to do that in person. Hand over the documents, whether it's a, a sale, a sale and a purchase, or maybe you just have something complicated going on with an old trailer you got from your grandpa or something. And, and we're lucky in our community to have an office. Not all, um, communities in North Dakota have an office to do this. This is actually contracted work from the North Dakota Department of Transportation. So North Dakota Department of Transportation is tasked with licensing vehicles. And then organizations and individual communities can contract to do the work. And for years, it was different nonprofits in Williston that did this. I believe the Chamber for a while and then the College Foundation. And at some point, the city and the county were told that those org, there was no nonprofit anymore who could fu, who could facilitate hosting this department. And, and, uh, we had some conversations with the city and the request was that we take on this function. And so we did, I would tell you this decision was made roughly, I would say in two thousand eighteen. And, and we ended up remodeling the first floor of this building to accommodate DMV in the corner where they are today. So that they could have that, that entrance. They get a lot of foot traffic and there's a lot of service to our community. And, and frankly, the surrounding area, we get folks coming, coming from up north for sure. Because there's no DMV office up in Divide County. There is a DMV office down in Watford City. And so, uh, we get some, some traffic coming in from the north. Uh, and it serves to support our car dealerships in town who have lots of title, titling work to do. So Williams County is the contracting agent through DMV or through DOT for DMV services. Every number of years, I can't remember if it's five or three, we have to go through a, a recontracting process with them. So the two documents in your packet are maybe not quite the final version that we need to complete to start the process. Actually, Micah came here, I think, early in the year and said, do I have your permission? Are we still going? You all said yes. Now we have two documents in your packet that relate to insurance and bonding. It's just making sure that the organization that's doing this work on behalf of the state has proper insurance and bonding in place for any errors that might happen. So we're going to need the chairman's permission to sign these two documents once I'm certain that they're complete and accurate, correct? We had, we needed one change from the state. I'm not sure which copy we have right here. But the chairman will sign two documents. That initiates the contract process with the state. And once we've completed that, of course, with Karen's involvement, then we would need the chairman to sign the second one. And it will be sometime in the month of June. I'd like permission to just complete the process with the chairman's signatures without needing to for sure come back at the next meeting.
Is the change, um, under additional covered parties, the name of the dispatch center? Or can that be taken care of? Cause it's, it's got the wrong name under additional covered parties. It's got the old name for our dispatch center listed here.
Oh, okay, you're looking at, I, I can update that as well, yes. That is just a copy of our insurance policy. So yes, I can, I'll fix that too.
Got it.
Mm-hmm, I didn't look at that, good catch. So I, I need permission for the chairman to sign the two documents that are included in the packet and any future documents needed to finalize our process.
I would move to authorize the chairman to sign those documents necessary with the DMV in the county.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
One more thing. Uh, it, the chairman and I had a meeting with the Upper Missouri Valley Fair Association a few months ago. And we ju, which we conveyed this board's, board's offer to purchase their property. As a part of our ongoing efforts to, um, improve and support quality of life efforts. The chairman asked that I bring it up today because I mentioned it at the time and then I haven't provided any update. And that's because the fair board has not finalized a yes or no decision for us. Uh, they. Uh, they, they have not had a meeting in which they've called for a vote on this question. And, and now as we get closer to the fair, they've indicated that it is, um, they, they ha, they have to place their attention on planning for the fair. And so they have asked for, uh, an extension until after the fair. I expressed to them some frustration that, uh, we had hoped to have this decision made by the spring. If in fact, we, we have plans to make for future or updates at that site, if we were going to purchase it. And or for future construction projects related to the one percent sales tax. And the sooner that we can hear from them their answer, the better for us. Uh, the chairman and I did play a little phone tag yesterday, so, or not yesterday, last week. I was in and out a little bit and, and so we missed each other. It's not wholly on him. So, uh, the chairman had asked that I give an update today. And so there it is.
And I guess we, we did make it fairly clear at the meeting that we, you know, we wanted an answer. Nothing worse than a long no. And I, I guess, I, I, I'm at the point where I'm ready to move forward and start pursuing other avenues. And that's my feeling on it rather than wait. Um, cause if we keep waiting, there's always a reason to push it off. And I, you know, I think we, we made a, we were trying to just help. I mean, we're not trying to steal anybody's thunder, do anything. We're just trying to help and make it better. So I, I guess I would like to see us, uh, probably think about moving forward and, and, uh, trying some different avenues. Uh, and which would probably mean we'd pull back the offer, I guess. What are the thoughts of the rest of the commission?
And I think, I think what Cory means by pursue other, uh, the idea is we know that in the one percent. In the, in the one percent sales tax extension of which I don't know that we've actually, have we gotten a deposit yet Cory or Christie? Yeah, so we, we haven't actually gotten one penny of money yet from the sales tax extension. But we are thinking ahead to the projects that we've committed to. We will need some acreage to construct those arena spaces and the ag education and programming spaces. And so that was part of our intention with the fairgrounds to try and see if, if some of those facilities could go there. And, and if that organization is unwilling to sell the property that they own to partner with us. Then moving forward means where else might we build it? Who else might be interested in selling property?
And I think the other thing that people, that everybody needs to understand is we're not even certain that it'll all fit. Um, with the way it's set up at the fairgrounds right now. Uh, we, we don't want to abandon it. There's some, there's some great, great buildings and some great, uh, things out there. But to, to do what kind of the plans we've put together with some of this money, I, we're not positive it's even going to fit.
And we haven't, I haven't asked engineers or architects to do any work because we don't own the property. It feels like that would be money poorly spent. But, but we've done a little spitballing.
I think it's important to note too, that we have to think about who the county fair will be if, if it's not the fairgrounds, if it's not at the fairgrounds. And, and so that's a consequence of this as well. And I think it's important for the public to know that, so.
Yeah, cause if, if we build this somewhere else, um, I, I would say the fair's probably going to move. Cause four H is obviously going to be a big part of it with, uh, the stuff we've discussed. So, you know, I. To me, I just, I, I just feel like we're, we're sitting stagnant, not doing anything. And what I would like to see us do is to continue to move, whether that's talking to people about land because there is land around that. There's possibilities, but it's, it's kind of hard to go and, and keep moving forward when we're sitting waiting to hear an answer on, on another property that we're not even sure that's going to work. And who knows, we, I mean, we could still end up being part of that also. But I, I, I just feel like sitting, we're, we're getting nothing done. And, and I would like to see us move.
So, I mean, I would agree, but, um, in their, and I guess in their defense, the fair is kind of a big deal for the fair board. So it's nice that we're, we'll give them the next few weeks to get through that. But I think the intention is to have some sort of an answer by the meeting, either the first or second meeting of July. Is that what was conveyed to fair board?
Uh, what I said was.
As soon as possible.
In my conversation with the chairman, he was frustrated.
Yeah, I wanted an answer today.
No, I understand. And fair starts.
I, I understand, but we've already pushed it back to this. They pushed it back to this. We talked about this before. This isn't, the fair didn't just happen. I mean, and, and I'm sorry, it's, I am frustrated because it feels like, you know, we've, we've met, we've talked to them, we've tried to explain it. And, and again, we're not, we're not trying to steal anybody's thunder. We, we want to help and make it better. But the longer we sit and wait, it's just going to push us back that much further.
Yeah, and I agree. But, I mean, this is where we're at. So I'm guessing first, first or second meeting in July, then it's move on. But I think they need, they also need to understand that we're looking for additional opportunities for placement. And, you know, we're not going to wait forever, obviously, so, um.
Yeah, I mean, I would just reiterate, I, I think we all know, but maybe not, maybe not all the people in the room know. We, we did not make a, an offer to purchase for some kind of fair market price. What, what we offered was a price that we thought provided them some cash to be able to, to work and go into the future, doing some things. An opportunity for us to hold some grant dollars that they could potentially use for some bigger initiatives in the future. But, but the, the offer we made them was low because we understand the amount of money that will need to be invested into the property. In order to, um, sort of, sort of bring it up to expectation. They are a five oh one three C, C three that certainly is going to struggle in the long term. Has struggled and will continue to struggle in the long-term maintenance of what is sixty-plus acres on the edge of town. So our, our intent, I think, as Cory said, your intent has been to try and help maintain this asset for the community. Relieve them of the burden of property ownership so that they can focus on operating a fair.
I just think, give them till the second meeting in July, and if not, then we just move on.
Is that a motion or, I mean, we're, we're going to need to do a motion and a vote here. So I, I guess, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, extend to them that the answer needs to be to us by the fifteenth of July, which would be our second commission meeting.
I'll second that, that was exactly the date I had in mind.
Okay, moved in second and any discussion? Any discussion, none? Roll call please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
No.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, Karen, do we leave this meeting open for the equalization meeting? Or do we close it and do a different one? Cause it's on the agenda.
No, you close. No, you close this meeting because that's a completely different sort of Borg.
Okay, I didn't know if something changed. So, uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned. We'll come back at nine o'clock for equalization.